Clerk Park, can we call Committee of Holts order, please?
Lennon?
Here.
Wywood?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Bobone?
Here.
Ruiz?
Here.
Aronella?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Eight present, ma'am.
Okay, so tonight, we have a presentation on the ALPR system, an overview of the Flock Safety as the vendor. Michael Fellows are, and the detectives, can you take it off?
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Commander Mike Fellows. I am the Unicameral Overseas from Investigations Unit. Back on September 14th, we went over a presentation in regards to the, just like an overall general view of what the ALPR technology is. The 28th of September, City Council approved an RFP to go out. That RFP was out for 30-plus days. In the end, we did have five bids that came back into City Council from that RFP. There was a review process between myself and a few other members of the Borough Police Department. In the end, our recommendation is to go with a company called Flock Safety. There is a representative here this evening, Dan Murdock, from Flock Safety, to give you a overview of what the services and what they provide. And if you have any questions during or after, we're here to take those questions. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Murdock with Flock Safety.
All right, gentlemen, the gentleman who I sent that link to, for him to hop on here, he did not join. I'm not sure if he still wants to, but I'm just going to...
It might be Jimmy. You mean, all of them in Wywood?
He indicated that he'd be watching the live feed.
Okay, okay.
So, well, first of all, really appreciate you guys taking a couple of minutes out of your day to learn a little bit more about Flock. And just a little background on our company. Flock is based out of Atlanta, Georgia, and we've been in business for over five years now. And we came into being because our owner and CEO of the company, a guy named Garrett, he was head of his own homeowners association in a neighborhood just outside of Atlanta, who was having issues with people coming in the neighborhood, checking for unlocked cars, and stealing stuff out of cars. Pretty common crime, I'm sure, unfortunately happened in Berwick. They called up their local PD, and they came out to come ask me some questions, or detective came out and asked them, does anyone see anything that happened? Does anyone have a ring doorbell you can look at, anything like that? And unfortunately, there was no evidence either. And that police officer wasn't a miracle worker. So unfortunately, the crime went unsolved. But he did mention that he had a license plate. That had been really helpful in his investigation. So, the HOA went online to look up license plate readers and found it about $27,000 to buy a new plate reader, get it installed, run the power, the internet, the whole nine yards. They're like, this is crazy. But Garrett, he happened to meet a left luncheon nearby trade, and he built his own license plate reader in his garage. Stuck in the farther subdivision, it's like one of those one-way-in, one-way-out type deals. They had the exact same crime happen a couple of weeks later. They were able to filter out all their local residents, came back two rogue plates, gave it to local PD. They did a quick investigation, ended up recovering from stolen items, and a light bulb went off his head, said, I think I got a business here. And he started selling these homemade plate readers, I got one right here, to local HOAs and businesses throughout the Southeast, and the company grew. And a couple of years in a sheriff's department, who had some in their jurisdiction, asked if they could buy some for the county itself. That sheriff helped them get hooked into the National FBI's NCIC database, which recognizes stolen vehicles, warrants, things like that, and we expand to law enforcement. Now, the big difference between what Garrett created, basically any other LPR system on the market, was pre-Flock, LPR systems were basically shining infrared light into roadways, and when a metal license plate crossed it, it would reflect that the raised numbers off the metal license plate back, and that's how it was making its origins. So, a police department, you had to know what license plate you were already looking for, or it had to be on some list. Garrett didn't really have any sort of background, anything like that, and he basically built a glorified trail camera. So, the way these guys work is anytime something moves in front of it, it takes a bunch of pictures. And Garrett wrote machine learning over the top of it for it to be able to identify what was the license plate and read the numbers off it. But once that happened, he's like, I got a picture of the whole vehicle here. So, was that a Chevy, or was that a Ford? And was it green, or was that brown? And was that a van, or was that a truck? And made all those things filterable. So, basically, I took this technology from being something where law enforcement already had to know information about the vehicle, to now, a witness just has to say, I saw a red car pull away from that house. Or have a ring doorbell, see a black truck pass by after a plate. And now, the police will be able to go back and pull the red Toyota cars and work backwards to the license plate. So, that's really the big jump forward here in technology that Flock brings to bear. Does anyone have any questions about that? Nope? Great. Also, with these cameras, these shoot down roadways at the rears of vehicles. So, we are capturing the rear, rear of the vehicle, and that is what all the machine learning is reading off of. So, and Illinois, we have both front-back plates, but the reason all of our machine learning is all about back plates is because we are a national company. Now, for, Flock has worked with civil liberty groups to design a more palatable LPR system for them. And that really comes down to three very important pieces that have, there have been some, our civil rights concerns around. And the first one is these forever databases. Just because you passed a camera once 10 years ago, you're still sitting in a database somewhere. With Flock, that's not the case. Every capture is stored on CIGIS-certified Amazon web servers for 60 days. After 60 days, if law enforcement has not deemed that this capture is relevant to an investigation, it's purged, and it's gone-gone. So, if it is not, so if it is not deemed law enforcement worthy, it doesn't exist anymore. Two, the city of Berwick is not buying cameras from Flock. You guys are buying the data coming out of the cameras, which we sell for $2,500 per cam per year, and the city of Berwick owns that data. So, there is no reselling to third-party vendors. If you've read online or anything about LPRs, where some LPR companies are basically collecting data and then reselling it to insurance companies, or analytics companies, or things like that, that is not the case with this system. Your citizens are not being turned into a problem. And then, three, your department decides any other law enforcement agency that can have access to that data as well. So, your law enforcement agency is working pretty close with Cicero. Cicero is also a Flock client. It might make sense for you guys to be able to share information, but maybe not so much to share with Indianapolis or somewhere like that. So, the department is able to make those strategic decisions on who they are working with, who they are. Third is auditing and compliance. Every search and every plate that comes off a list that has been created is searchable by who searched it, what camera it was searched by, and what time it was searched. So, there's full audit trail going back as long as you are a client of every, of every one of these searches that is made. Does anyone have any questions about any of that?
Yeah, so on your website, it says a 30-day retention. Here, it says 60, and then in the letter, it says 90. What's the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Correct. So, obviously, like I talked about, we are going to be holding this for 90 days. We're going to be paying a small extra fee for that. As part of the service contract, it states 90 days in it.
Okay. And why would we do that when this is like the civil liberty recommendation?
90 days, we hold all the video, like for booking videos, anything inside the police department, we hold that for 90 days, based upon those laws. We just wanted to keep it all the same.
Okay. Well, we wouldn't consider changing it to be the civil liberty recommendation for the school?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, there's not like a set standard. The concern for the civil rights community is that it's forever, it's a forever database. Not that is like, that basically, that we're talking about years and years of data being compiled on individual individuals, which this is not bad. The, you guys are able to basically kind of determine what is speckled for you guys as an organization. And Illinois, we have anywhere from 120 days down to 30 days. It's kind of, there's a lot of variability in that.
Want to talk about content. So, the retention, is it actually done by your content or by the floor and piece of content?
So, every capture is stored on Amazon web servers. So, it's a cloud-based system. That is, it's a CIGIS designation, which is a law enforcement designation for security, that is on a cloud that we basically support and run. And then, the, our system basically destroys that data once it rolls off the retention basis.
I have a question. Commissioner Fellows, is there any recommendation from the state archivist as to how long you have to keep this type of record?
Not specifically. When we talk with other videos in regards to like laws and things like that, our normal is 90 days. They want us to keep everything for 90 days, any videos that we have. Not that we have body cameras or in-car cameras like that, but the suggestions in regard to our state for videos of that nature is 90 days. That's why it was my recommendation to bring this data up to that 90-day retention.
Thank you.
And it is, it is a patchwork kind of across the country, which is why we leave it up to jurisdictions to decide. Like California, it's mandatory, everyone has to keep it for a whole year. I mean, it's just a kind of a patchwork of how it's put together. There's no like national standard, so to speak. Does anyone else have any questions around that? Great. So, I mentioned before, Flock is actually the largest LPR vendor in the state of Illinois now. We actually only entered the Illinois market in 2019, where we had two clients, it was Joliet and South Barrington. We ended last year with 27 clients, and we are now up to 63 law enforcement agencies in Illinois using Flock's LPRs. And one of the reasons that we've grown so quickly is our public-private partnership. So, if there are other community members like HOAs or businesses looking to take advantage of this technology, we sell directly to the public as well, and their cameras can loop directly into the police department's camera system as well. So, if you have big-box retailers, homeowners associations in general, apartment complexes that might have experienced issues, all those can partner with the police and basically share their data directly with them as well. So, creating kind of a community-police-relationship. And as far as what these deployments look like, these are the three core deployments. Most common is on an existing pole that you guys own. The little hanging camera, hang a solar panel, showing what that looks like. Two is if whoever isn't existing infrastructure, we can grab our own IDOT-approved 12-foot pole in the ground, we'll hang the camera and hang the solar panel. And if we want to hook into city power, we will hang the camera, get it all set up. Someone can see we actually have to come and make the connection. So, now, this is, this is what it looks like for roads that have about 12,000, 10, 12,000 vehicles on them per day. Ones that have more than that, there's an additional battery box that goes on about this high up as well that stores extra battery power for them. Now, we talked about, as far as the price is concerned, everything is looped into this $2,500 for you guys. So, this doesn't, isn't something that looks like a cable bill where it's a bunch of variable pricing, where you're not exactly sure, depending on how many users you have, or maintenance things, things like that. Everything is wrapped into the $2,500. So, Flock's a fully vertically-integrated organization, where we design the software and the hardware ourselves in Atlanta. We assemble these cameras ourselves in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a sales rep, I live lower in Brookfield, I come around the state trying to set up some cameras. The techs who install the cameras and do ongoing maintenance, those are Flock employees, they roll out of Bolingbrook. So, they will be doing the whole installation, they will be, will be handling any permitting for the state or county. We will, if there's any ongoing maintenance issue with the camera, we roll a tech, they'll either fix, attempt to fix it, or if it's a hardware problem that the hardware needs replaced, we replace that hardware, no cost to the city. So, the price is a lot at Flock. Does anyone have a question about that, about what these live images look like? Great. Now, as far as these cameras themselves, what they look like. When your detectives log in, this is what they're going to be seeing. So, this is not very complicated. These are a couple demo cameras that are actually up over in Cicero here, where, so you're basically picking what cameras you want to see, what time you want to see them, and what you want to search for. So, this is, I'll grab everything anytime I went by in the last, last four hours. And I'll grab this camera down here on Cicero, just south of Roosevelt. It's crazy how dark it gets so early now. But this is what a night read looks like. So, you can scroll through here, you can click on the individual captures, but this is the quality of the image that we're talking about here. So, even at night here, there's infrared built into the camera itself, which is highlighting the metal license plate for them, but you can see the vehicle, obviously, get some information on the vehicle visually, but also, we are providing the make, color, and type of vehicle. As you see here, this little confidence reading, anytime we're less than 90% confident in a read that we're making, we'll flag that as that way. Now, we're doing the investigation, and what type of vehicle someone is looking for?
Honda Civic.
Honda Civic, okay. So, you come in here, I'm going to grab all the cars. It's kind of a Zillow search, we'll show you how many of each one we got here. We're going to grab all the cars, we're going to grab all the Hondas. And also, this, so it goes to make, it doesn't like show you the difference between a Civic and, I don't know, another Honda.
A large Civic.
Sentra. I'm from Detroit, I was never allowed to, wouldn't be allowed to own one of those. And it can also come all the way down to color. So, I'm going to grab all the gray and silver, but you know it's dark out, it might have also been white, so you can do multiple searches in here at once. And I come down here, this is kind of what we're looking, what it'd be looking like during the day. But again, so this is, so just a matter of seconds, going from the description of the incident to the vehicle, we're able to pull that very quickly. Now, that's everything from the investigative side of the system. The other side of this is the hot lists. So, as I mentioned before, we're directly integrated with the NCIC database, which is the database for, the FBI has for all stolen vehicles, terrorists, things along those lines. The leads database, which is the Illinois-specific database run by the Illinois State Police, Amber Alert, Silver Alerts, and then custom hot list that his department creates, or ones that have been shared with him by other local agencies that you guys are part of. The Cook County Sheriff's Department has an agreement with us as well, through an MOU, where they can receive data from agencies as well as they can go through their dispatch center if you guys want to also run. So, the latency on these cameras is 10 to 15 seconds. So, and we can send out these alerts as text messages, emails, we can put them right in the squad cars, or send it to dispatch. So, you can have an officer on the road, Officer McDonald's, writing a report, is in a parking lot, and a stolen vehicle passes a camera on Harlem. He will get a, sorry, he will write in his squad car, you can get a little bubble with a little buzzing noise that says, "Red Saab, missing person." He clicks it, he'll get a picture of the plate, picture of the vehicle, location, direction of travel, and why it can go off the hot list. So, in near-real time, they can respond to either attempt to intercept that stolen vehicle, or drive it out of town. Does anyone have any questions about that? So, based on the near-real timeness of this, and the ability to do sharing between departments, produces real results. Just, I don't know if you guys know where Rantool is, but it's just north of Champaign. They put these in a couple of months ago, and like the second week, they had a drive-by shooting at 11 o'clock in the afternoon. They had it radioed into them, it was actually 11:38. They had an officer on the scene at 11:40, where one of the witnesses said it was a small white car. He radioed that back to the station, where a detective threw in white cars real quickly, and cameras in the area only picked up one vehicle that really met that description. They put it in a hot list, and Rantool's not a very big place, but they were able to do that before the person got from the shooting to the highway. And they got the hot list in in time, and the car passed it, sent out a real-time alert to not only the Rantool PD, but also the Champaign County Sheriff's Department, who was also looped into the system. They had an officer who's doing speeding on the highway, saw the car ride by, got behind it, they gave chase, ended up, the guy ended up failing on the car, and they arrested four people on the third hole of the Urban and Country Club. So, they were able to take within 17 minutes. So, within 17 minutes of a drive-by shooting, they had four people in custody, weapon, vehicle, plus that ended the need for retaliation, shooting back, ending that circle of violence. And stories like those are all across the state as well. Does anyone have any questions about any of that? That is really the highlights of how the technology itself works. I can, if there's anything else that anyone would like to clarify about the product or anything like that, I'm happy to, happy to answer.
I have a question about if there's damage to the cameras, how are those replaced? Is it, do we have to replace them? Are they part of the system, or is insurance, or...
Yeah, so Flock will replace anything that is wear and tear, weather-related, anything like that. Someone, driver hits a pole, that's Flock will come out, replace it, unless it's your pole, then you've got to replace it. But, but we'll handle anything like that. Vandalism or theft, we replace the first one for free. Any additional one is a one-time $500 fee to hang a new camera. That being said, out of our 63 clients in Illinois, we have never charged a single one of them for that, but that is in the contract.
Okay.
How will the solar ones work, especially now without daylight, or what was deep with daylight colors?
Yeah, so... Yeah, so last year, our solar-powered cameras had an uptime of 96.8%. So, I don't know if you remember last December, but there was a 21 straight days of no sun, so I hope that doesn't come back for all of us. But there, we did have some downtime issues in 60% of our cameras during that stretch. We have actually revamped some of the, some of the cameras that have winterized across the state. We have upgraded the solar panels from last year to one that is designed for the Canadian market, and they are, they're able to capture light in low-light environments. And we, I talked about the battery banks, we now switched those from lithium-ion batteries to lead-based batteries, because the lithium-ion batteries freeze up after you go below zero, which caused some issues last year as well with the cold more than the, more than the actual sunlight. So, we have taken steps to address that. But that being said, a hard-wired camera, our uptime on those is over 99.9%. So, you are, you, we do acknowledge that you might have some downtime there. It is minimal and really confined to that December, February reach in timeframe, but it's certainly not non-existent.
One other question. If there's a camera that's down for some reason, we get alerted, we get alerted, and what is the response time to get that camera back up and running?
Yeah, so, well, first of all, these cameras, there are sensors in them that will, like, they get to understand what they're supposed to be capturing. So, if they're on a road that's supposed to be capturing 17,000 vehicles a day, and all of a sudden it's just getting like 650, an alarm will go off, and a human in Atlanta will take a look at that and see like, oh, there's a huge snowstorm. Yeah, that makes sense. There's, no one's on the road. But if there's nothing wrong, that will alert the guy that's in Bolingbrook. Your guys' main admin will get an email that someone has been scheduled to come take a look at it. The SLA is three days. So, someone will come out, they'll either attempt to fix it, they need to hang a brand-new camera, they'll do that. If there is an issue with the pole, the number-one reason we have to come out, though, is someone hit a pole. So, like, if we have to drop a whole new pole, that's a seven-to-10-day wait time. And if someone took out one of your poles, we have to wait for you to put in one of your own new poles. But if it's just like an issue with the hardware, three days, the SLA.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, this question might be for you. What are the surrounding communities that have any type of license plate reading system, whether it's Flock or not?
So, we're seeing a large influx, especially in our general area. So, if we're talking about the technology specifically, Cicero has the technology, Stickney is getting it, La Grange Park has it, Riverside has it, and there was justice to sign a contract with Flock.
We installed justice on December 3rd.
Countryside, all the communities around us are, either have this technology, or they are in the process of opening.
I can show you a map in Chicagoland of people who use Flock right now, if you would like. And these are, these are just installed cameras. So, there's, installation will take six to eight weeks for anything that doesn't need, or four to eight weeks for anything that doesn't need a permit. So, some of these, there are a couple of people who are still in installation. These are the cameras that are installed and in the ground. Each one of these little, each one of these little hat things, police hats, these are, those are police cameras. And then, little green houses and businesses, those are like HOA and business cameras. So, our biggest concentration is definitely kind of the I-55 corridor. We did just win the Naperville RFP as well, so we're putting cameras there. But then, up and down through Will County, and then up through the South Chicago suburbs, this is really kind of our, where we're most heavy here in the state. We also just won the deal for the DuPage County Sheriff's Department as well, they're putting a bunch of Flock cameras. But this is, this is Melrose Park over here, just got installed this week. Does anyone have any questions about that at all?
So, the notion, we don't have any homeowners associations here, so we don't have any subdivisions per se. The idea of a business and/or a apartment building having it, is that up to us to determine whether or not they can have one, or is it up to Flock just to, if they want to engage Flock by themselves?
I mean, you guys can create your own rules for your village if you decide that you didn't want anyone to be able to have an LPR other than the police.
Well, I would be very concerned about other people having it and being able to access our system.
Oh, they can't access it.
They cannot access it all unless the police decide to share it?
Well, the police can't share with the public. The public can share their cameras with the police.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear, yeah. So, the public cameras aren't like, I'm Joe Citizen, I get a Flock camera. My camera is not integrated with NCIC leads, Amber Alert, like, those hot lists still exist, but they can create their own hot list as well. So, like Walmart has had a problem with the same, same person coming in over and over again. They can create a hot list of their lost prevention persons, notify them when that person comes into the neighborhood, or into them. Or if at an apartment complex, someone has a restraining order against an ex-boyfriend or something, that person comes into the, to the, that his vehicle comes onto the property, she'll get a text right to her phone that her restraining order is now on her property. So, like, those are some kind of the use cases.
But the cameras we're dealing with as a city are strictly license plate readers, not necessarily for people.
Oh, they're not for people at all?
Right.
But like, basically what I'm saying is that if she, if someone has restraining order, their vehicle shows up.
Their vehicle, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, just their vehicle, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Do you have any data about this one, news or best?
Yeah. Joliet saw a 30% increase in their violent crime clearance rate since they put these in in 2019. And their chief technology officer said Flock was the number-one difference in the technology they've used since then. I, that's the only one I can really come off the top of my head, but...
Do you know like how long Cicero's got there?
Oh, Cicero's been installed for like 10 days.
Oh, that's literally what it's got there.
Yeah, yeah. They're actually, they've only, we're still waiting on some IDOT permits for them, and then they're putting some of their cameras actually in the city of Chicago, we're waiting on some Chicago permits. So, they only have like nine or 10 of theirs up. But Morton School District, 201, is also moving forward with cameras, or they've told me they are, I don't have paperwork yet for it. So, they are looking at putting cameras around Morton West, as well as everything else that's in Cicero. But, so they are also looking at moving forward this deal.
Michael, did you talk to La Grange Park?
Not specifically.
All right, I know Jim Frank, RIT guy, talked to La Grange Park about some questions regarding the Flock system, and they were very satisfied. We didn't get any, he didn't get any numbers as far as, you know, percentage of decrease in crime or anything like that. But did Jimmy talk to them pretty much more from the technical portion of the cameras?
I would say, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no.
I would say, well, La Grange Park just basically had like one entranceway that they are looking to cover. So, the way that they kind of described, they see a lot of their crime coming from 290 up through Westchester, and they basically put a camera to identify... coming from two ninety up through Westchester, and they basically put a camera to identify, because people come in with stolen vehicles, drops people off, steal vehicles, steal cattle, but that's, that's what they're trying to control. It's really just kind of a, they aren't necessarily looking at the same type of scope of project that you guys are. Like, I would compare what you guys are doing much closer like Cicero or, there's a lot of communities in the South Chicago suburbs that are also kind of looking at these type of, as far as camera numbers. So I'm not, I wouldn't really compare what La Grange Park.
No, he talked to them more about the technical portion about it all, and they were very satisfied with the technical.
Can you pull up all the Cicero cameras and tell me how many hits there were in the last twenty-four hours?
I don't have access to that, because I don't have.
Can I log in then?
Yes, you can.
Or I'll just say, so I, I know one of the things that had come up during this process too is, is, and it has been addressed in our policy, that is almost completed, but one of the things that had come up is the concern of people going in and just searching this data, willy-nilly we'll say. I did a search last night before, before I left my office. So as Dan said, so the town of Cicero only has nine of their twenty up. We have twenty-four cameras coming in. In the, in the last twenty-four hour period of the town of Cicero with nine cameras only, there were a hundred and seven thousand reads of license plates. So obviously, with all that data, there, it would be very difficult for any single person to be able to go on and look at all these different plates in a nefarious-type manner. I did want to address that because I know there was one thing that had come up in, in the past.
And when, when you are doing, when these audits do take place, like, it is, it will, it will leap out at anyone who's looking through these audits if an, if a detective runs the same plate thirty-something times, like, if he's trying to track an individual person that doesn't have law enforcement reasons. Every search you do also, you have to put in a reason as well. So I mean, like, that, that type of thing jumps off, jumps off the page on a day's audit.
Who polices those audits and complaints?
That is up to.
It would be, it would be, that, that is part of an audit.
That's part of ours?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, you guys, you.
So the public would never have access to that information or?
What do you mean?
Could that be for it or like that, that particular audit information, like about what was being searched, or is that just internal?
I guess, I'd have to research that one audit, Mr. Alderman, because again, it would be something that we would be looking at on our own. I can't see why it couldn't be, but, but again, I don't have that specific experience, but it's definitely something I can look into and get an answer for you.
And then what those policies, any of that?
That's okay.
That, that is, so, on, on the FOIA side, any things like autologs, all that are, are FOI-able items. Any, any capture that has been looked at by law enforcement and saved on New York as a server, you guys use evidence.com, anything that's pulled from the Flock cloud to evidence.com, that is all FOI-able. I need the captures that are up on the cloud and then obviously destroyed, none of that is FOI-able. So basically, what is FOI-able is the, the actions of the people on the system that's FOI-able, and any image itself that has been pulled off and saved into evidence.com that isn't currently part of an active investigation.
And then for that data, do you know like what they kind of censor out in the FOIA or?
I, I can answer that.
Yeah.
License plates are personal and private information, and that all has to be redacted. So that would not be allowed out to anybody who submits a FOIA.
So like in, in the scenario that this evidence is spoiled, then you would have like a list of this like, like what, what would be on?
I think it'd be for a more than audit. Let's say, for example, somebody had the presumption that an officer was accessing the system one too many times for whatever reason. You could FOIA the amount of times he went on that system to search it, but you wouldn't get the plate that he's searching. That's what Marge I think is explaining, Marge?
Yes.
But like in, in theory, if an officer is frequently like doing different searches of different plates or whatever on there, that would just look like an officer just doing a bunch of searches?
But depends on who they get permission to.
I don't know what an audit looks like, so I don't know what information would be there.
I'm just wondering like, you know, with FOIA stuff, like all this stuff that's redacted, so how would you tell in a FOIA if an officer searches one unique plate versus like this officer searches for all the plates, like it looks like now?
Good question.
I don't know, what, what somebody?
Yeah, I, I personally, I mean, I've never seen an actual real plate or a blessed, I'm kind of just talking about it theoretically way, so I'm, I don't really answer that question.
And, and again, for me, the, what I've seen in regards to the system, it, on the logging part of it, basically has the officer, what they're, what they're running, or the license plate of the vehicle type they're looking for, the case or reason why they're running it, and then obviously what the results are. So, so again, like.
So in that scenario, you would have like the make and model of the vehicle or something like that, that would be on the FOIA? Because that's not a license plate, Marge?
Yes, yeah.
So if there's a, if we own silver Toyota every day for thirty days, we'd see that on the FOIA?
Yeah, and you should also see the reason and the result too.
Right.
Because that's not identifiable.
So then, as far as what these audits actually, actually look here, you can audit by individuals as well as by network. So you can, my internet. But, so you can audit by individual camera, and this is at the department level or whoever you're having, you can do it by the camera, by the individual who searched it, and by the network. So if you are sharing it outside, your camera's outside, your network, you can see like Cicero's pulled thirty-three pulled, pulled off, so kind of Sheriff's has only, has looked at our cameras twelve times. But wow, why is, why has Zion done a hundred and forty-three searches? Like, like, things like that.
And I actually met with the mayor of Zion not too long ago. They have the Flock system, they are very happy, and he, again, I don't remember the percentage he said, but they've actually had some very good success in catching some of the people that come in with stolen autos that are attempting to steal another auto. And it, it has resulted in a decrease in that. Zion is, I believe, a lot smaller than us, but he said he was very happy with the Flock system.
Another question, this will be a review of the, are we going to have like some sort of data to track whether this is effective or not? Is this a yearly lease or is this ten-year or?
Two-year agreement.
Two-year agreement, okay.
And then your, your price is locked in for the renewal as well, if, if you want to renew. So this, the price that you have is locked in for four years. You can, at the two-year mark, you can decide if you want to.
Do we have something in place to evaluate if this is an effective tool, like, is there any something that's available presented or something that's available at some point?
Well, obviously, this is new technology to the department, so obviously it's something I'm going to be watching very closely and absolutely, because, because obviously, you know, whether it's Flock or if another company comes in, obviously, we want to, if this technology does work, I want to be able to come back to city council and show you all the great things that it has done so that we can continue with type, this type of technology and maybe even more technology. And if we have those same, you know, success stories, you know, my hope is to bring more of this technology into other intersections of the city. So yes, something like that is, is definitely something I'm going to be keeping track of.
And does that can be available with public somewhere or?
Well, it's a record, it'll be, it'll be a, a record of some kind, if the department will be on to see anything that I have like that, yeah, it's definitely.
Like, it could go up on like a website under like the data thing of like, you know, since we got Flock cameras, there's been a reduction in crime or the numbers, FOI has a number after that, like something.
Well, that all depends on how the police department decides to put it out, but however, if they present a presentation to us about the success rate, then that's public.
Right.
That's out in the public, so.
One other piece that comes along with Flock, we have a whole press team that will work with you guys, your department, to put out press releases about the system if you want to. If you have a high-profile success story, we, we will push that to local news outlets, we will, if you want to try to push it onto the nightly news, like, we have a whole team that that is, is generating those types of stories that have attempted to push out deposit press for the police department and to the city generally.
And, and just, just so we're clear, our goal is not to market Flock. I mean, we're not marketing agents for Flock, I understand what you're saying, and that's a great marketing tool, but the fact is, is that we're more concerned about what's, how's it working for our community.
Right, absolutely. And so in, in some of the research that I did about license plate readers, we found it was not Flock in particular, but there was kind of a mixed bag of whether or not they were effective. One of the things that I saw in one of the studies that I read was that rotating the cameras around was an effective tool in, in, you know, in helping to make these more effective because it's, at the third ward meeting last week, people asked like, you know, if they see a camera, are they going to stop coming to that intersection or find a different intersection to come in? So is that a part of the plan or are we trying to?
The whole idea of that question did not make a lot of sense. I was at the third ward meeting. The people that are coming into this town with stolen vehicles, that are stealing more vehicles, are using our main corridors to get in and out of town. They're not going to get in and out of town very easily if they're taking side streets. So I think that.
So like turning out?
At some point, I understand that that could be, but that to me would be more of a deterrent for them to even come into town. Riverside has them, I'm sure they only have them at main intersections because how else would you drive through that town? But what I'm saying is, is that while it may be a deterrent in them to try and avoid other streets, I think it's more of a deterrent of them not to come to the town to begin with. Because it's the easiness of the main corridors in and out.
Right, that was like what the white paper said though, is that rotating the cam, like the cameras lose effectiveness over time because they're.
Sure, sure, understood.
Rotating those cameras is the way to like come back.
And that makes sense, that makes sense. After a certain period of time, that probably does make sense, but we have to see what the results are, and if it's slowing down results, but we still see an uptick in crime, then we'd have to make that determination, sure.
And what I will say around it is, I mean, part of what you are looking for is the deterrent. I mean, like you said, it is, you, you want that, I mean, you guys are pretty close to pretty rough parts, like it's not like three miles from some pretty rough areas there. I mean, if they keep, have them go by Berwin and keep going, because they know those, that they know someone who got pulled over off, off a camera head, I mean, that's, that's kind of all part of this.
And you said that you are almost done on the policy or what's still effective? Do you have any?
Just, basically, it's been written, it's just, there's just some authoritative people that need to make sure that it's okay, and I believe that it goes to a lot of permits.
Okay, and when will that be available?
I don't know the specific date, but I know sooner than later is what I can say.
Before the cameras go up?
Hundred percent, yes, yes. The policy will be ready and approved by the time the first camera goes up, that is correct.
But you don't, you don't think like, you know, that was in two, three weeks or something versus five, six?
No, the biggest issue that we have with these cameras, like Dan mentioned a little bit, is, is our IDOT permits. So the cameras can go very, very simply within, like you said, maybe seven to ten days, but the problem we do have is you're going to, I think about, at least in regards to this project, I believe Sixteenth and Lombard, we did that one comparison, is I believe the only area that's out with the, that does it, is not IDOT-regulated or overseen. So all those other cameras need permitting. And from what, and Dan can be a little more specific, from what I've heard, is that can take anywhere from four to six months. So we are, I'm hoping to have this by spring of next year up and running completely, with all the permitting and everything.
So later than the, what the, I think in the original, I want to say in reverse to that or?
Correct, at that point, when I did that part of it, I wasn't, I did not know that IDOT was that long, but I've since learned that, and that's kind of where we're at now.
Okay, and this, and this needs to be approved in order to move forward with the IDOT stuff or, you know, be done in tandem or?
So Flock owns the, will own the permitting process for you. We will contract you directly with a third-party engineering firm, a couple of people called Will Hoffman, that Flock pays for. And not the cheapest process in the world, so we don't, we don't start that until we have a contracted man. But like, it's, it's a pretty crazy amount of paper. It's like, for this, it's going to be like two hundred and fifty pages, like, they'll come out, they do all the surveying, all that stuff, and then we'll basically build that, we'll turn it over to your, their, your department to sign off on it, then we'll submit the permits on your behalf. For a long, we, actually, Flock got to Illinois, there was no such thing as a license plate reading permit for the state. We actually, actually, I made it all the way to head up permitting at IDOT, and therefore they, they listened to what our, the concerns were, we had a couple pretty active chiefs who helped us get, get there along the way. But last year, they created a brand-new permit for this. Downstate, we've been very successful, we've approached it pretty easy. In region one up where you guys are, it's a little bit more challenging, but we are now getting permits, permits through. We have our, our infrastructure for our poles, our cameras, been improved at the state level, that our hardware is good, they just have to approve locations. And up, yeah, up here it's taking three to six months for them to basically approve.
We already have locations set, is that right?
That's correct.
And if those locations even know which, which types of the cameras, are they going to be the solar, direct power, the portable ones or?
So I'm gonna, my understanding is we're doing the heavy-duty solar at this point?
Yeah.
That's not existing, or is it?
A combination, depending on, there's no difference in price between, between these, but it's like, like this one right here, it looks like we're going on this pole right here for Sixteenth and Lombard, and then like Harlem and Roosevelt, also looks like we're definitely using poles, there's no grass there. So it's definitely a, it's a mixed bag here.
Any other questions? So we're looking at a, probably a first-quarter installation. If we, if we approve tonight, it's probably a first-quarter installation or the first...
We'll, we'll install anything right away that we can install without permits, but we do not start the contract until we get the last camera in.
Okay.
So you guys will kind of get some free time up, so to speak, until we can get all the permits together.
Okay, and this, this was put in our budget already for two thousand and twenty-two?
Well, Mike's got it explained in a letter, our portion of it's in the budget, and then the BDC has agreed to pick up a portion of it because of the areas that they're in.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Other questions? Have we decided where the cameras are going to be?
I did. The reason, and the place that I chose, as the mayor talked about a little, a little while ago, is basically all of our main thoroughfares, our entrances and exits. Obviously, as, you know, we've talked about, there is an investigative tool, but there's also that preventative, preventive tool. You know, these cars coming into town that are stolen or Amber Alerts, things like that, we're trying to get that data as soon as they enter our town to be able to deal with it at that point. So it's Roosevelt, Sixteenth Street, Cermak, Twenty-Sixth Street, there is one camera by the tracks in Harlem, and then Ogden Avenue on both the Harlem and the Lombard sides. The total, the total amount of cameras that Flock proposed as, as part of this is twenty-four total cameras.
One, just, it's like, yeah, there's, we don't know what, where like the water mains and the underground utilities are, because we are dropping about three feet worth of cement. So there might be a little bit of a shift depending on if like you have a water main there. So it might go up and down the road a little bit, but this is general locations before we actually get on site.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you. That's up on the agenda for tonight, so thank you very much. Marge, you have some closed minutes you want us to review?
I'm going to pass out some closed minutes. Actually, just one minute.
If there's any questions on it though, I would ask that, because we're not in a closed session right now, so if you do have questions regarding it, I don't think we should bring it up in the open session. If you do, I'll, I'll clear the courtroom if you have a question. It's only one, one date.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else then, can I ask for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
So will.
Let in by Ruiz, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Stay in about forty minutes. And don't forget, the camera's still rolling, guys. You want to, Jimmy, huh? You want to call Jimmy back?
Um, no, goodbye, Jim, we'll call you back.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Did, did you, you seconded Scott's motion to adjourn? Okay.
I thought I was first, but apparently.
I thought I was first, but apparently, mayor said let in than me.
Okay.
Nice guess, we're good. Yeah, exactly. But the stores aren't late.
Yeah.
There's something.
Man, I'm still protesting this. Look at this. They said it's stuck in China.
Get out of here.
I was just messing with him. I was, he was in the background on a truck, and I was like, listen to him. I was like, is it floating on one of those, one of those barges out in San Diego or San Francisco?
I thought they're having the time of its life somewhere.
It's out floating around. He's like, Robert, I'm so sorry. It actually said that it arrived, and, you know, it could be somewhere here in City Hall, but I don't know. I was like, I almost ordered one, and I'm glad I didn't, because he's, you notice the color? It's, it's weird. Look at this color. I, I thought it was brown.
No, it's like a...
It's like a red magenta, or, I don't know, what color?
It's almost like a rust, like a brown, rust, orange.
I don't even know what that color is.
Burgundy.
Yeah, I think it's closer to a burgundy red, like a...
Yeah.
It's a former red, but who knows what it is.
Yeah, it's very dark. But you know what? You're already standing out by not having one. It's worse if you're standing out and it's a different color.
Because the, the ones, if you go online, they're like this. They're like law.
Yeah, but see, now it's going to blend in with the wood.
I know, you won't be able to see it.
You're not going to see it.
Yeah, you won't be able to see it. And I wanted to, and that's how it's kind of, I don't know, okay, did you guys ever hear you? Because it's a holiday, you know, like, so like, I was like, you know what, people are going to be thinking about the cranberries and the turkey, and the Christmas day.
I don't know, unless you're raffling some giveaways at Target.
That was so crazy yesterday. I didn't think people were going to be that nuts about it.
What happened?
About the raffle? They were just so...
What raffle?
They were more excited about the raffle, because we raffle TVs. And, yeah, we did raffle TVs and air fryers with, while you...
Yeah, we didn't have fryers.
We, we were giving out, so it's, because you know they're standing at high personal so, we should give, take, give them, raffle tickets. And like, for every 50 people, they're giving air fryer, or whatever. And, but the people were more nuts about that than even the turkey. Yeah, yeah.
Do the video, you're an air fryer dude.
Not anymore.
Jake, you know, tune in?
Tune in.
Are you the winner?
At the end of the raffle.
Then my winner speaks. Going to pull a winner.
At the end of the video, we're going to give away.
Yeah, promising they're going to tune in.
I know, it's, it's YouTube, like, that's literally how they do it, right? On your computer, whatever.
Right.
There's a reason they do that.
I'll give you that secret giveaway right at the end. Hold tight.
There's, there's obviously a big reason.
Because they do let me in, so I'm letting in, and then when I'm like, oh, I better watch you play. No, bro, I didn't care serious.
I'm going to, I'm going to click password.
They don't let you password.
No, you're right, you're right.
I'm like, oh, I'm over it. I'm over it.
No, it's funny, you're right.
Secret ain't out there, and the first five minutes, I'm done. Yeah, not even five minutes sometimes. This is the most asinine stuff I've ever seen.
What is this?
Seeking shelter for homeless. Call this number. How many people, homeless people have this on? This is if you're trying to assist someone, or how about if a homeless person is trying to assist themselves? It's not the name of the person, change your cellular phone, just hang on. Yeah.
So that's why, that was funny. But that threw me off, because I was here in Southern Hollywood, okay, you guys got started.
Because I just learned that Jim needs 20 minutes to switch to, oh, well, we need to switch to, to save room, like.
Oh, Jim, Jim, oh, I thought, Jim. I mean, I guess. And not that you're talking about Jim, because he's still, still sleeping.
He, he just call in. That's where someone will take some of my...
No, I'm seriously starting, age, you get older, I'm starting to get acid, you know, it's, I just never get hurt.
I plan on changes.
Yes, changes.
After a while, it's like...
Yes, you get older, you can't just like, you know, and then, well, you know, in the realtor, all we, we eat out probably, you know, at least one time a day, you're eating.
One meal.
Yeah, at least one, at least once you're out.
And it's always a drive-through, because you don't have time to sit down.
Yeah. And it's starting to get me. So I started to do more grilled chicken instead of, you know, typically getting fried chicken or whatever.
And it all smells good. It smells like air when you're driving by, and it happens to be when you're hungry and you have a ache. But this is once. But once is like five times that week already, you know?
Yeah, so I've been going to the, and it works still, because cheese, I'm like, what's going on? I'm pulling out my pants. I was like, are you serious? And I did it for like two, like, I think I started listening like 3:00, trying to go to the hot pot. And it's crazy. And more water, I try to work around with it. Yeah, I try to work around with this. But, but I felt it even, like, I was talking about, like, acid or whatever. So I just kept trying to think, drink water, think it's going to go down. It wasn't like a sunset. And then that too, the sodas or the, the, like, you know, you like your, all those little frizz pops.
I, and you know what? Those are the first things I think about. I was like, is that wrong? Come on.
Uh-oh.
I wouldn't eat it.
Is that one? Look, this is the one that, this is the one that stinks.
I moved into it. All right, let's go, let's go. I'm done. Everybody knows you're on a diet, Robert.
I know, I know. It was funny.
Everybody knows he's got acid.
We're, we're, we're away from the mic. We're just talking about, like, I was just saying, and that never happens in your book. Hey, you guys should have been there on my street there. That was nice. It looks like they, was that, was that? Yes. Finally, the guy did that. Love soda. Usually when making that song, like, all the, I scream, I can always, um, not, it's not like. This time, right, it's really old. You do one, you feel like, no, you don't, by the way, you're playing. Is there more than one? Any type of, any type of water. They also get, they can still, grass fall is going to be on the other, two to three weeks, and then it'll be doing that. They can have to do that. If the ground's not completely frozen, you have, you have, uh, the hardest person to track down. I'll just have to blanket it. He's saying that he's hard to track me. Because they always want... He's got a title and a shoe. They, they hit the button and then follows. They always just want money, that's why. Nothing wrong with that.
I'm good, how are you? I was thinking about you today. I'm watching you on the video there. Do you have a consulting company? You do. That's awesome.
On which one?
LinkedIn.
Oh, okay.
I love that. It's a powerful stuff out there. I'm like, hmm, I hope you utilize the next one.
If they love. You don't put today?
So then I'm like...
It's not, it's not like...
So then I'm like, I'm like, oh my God, I open drinks, seven, seven hours of holiday cheer. Next week is my last week of class.
Oh, look at that.
After that, holiday cheer finally starts. Oh, where was this at? At Tuto? This is scary danger.
I know.
Oh, wow. Oh, look at that. Very cool. At Tuto? Oh, no, they have, they have one?
Where's Tuto?
Is that Bourbon Town or?
Is that, is it about the Bravo one? Yeah, it's across the, across the street and to the east. So is, is it, is like a brewery there, or is it?
Restaurant.
Oh, a restaurant, okay. I was just thinking about the Bourbon.
Oh, okay. Is it true?
Did you even know that when I did that, there was a barbecue place, it's called, oh, Barbecue Gold? Oh, yeah, Baby Gold. So they, they teamed up with a brewery, and they got their own brewery called Baby Gold. It's amazing. You tried it?
Oh.
It's amazing. You gotta try it. It's really...
Do they, they, how's their, their, so, the chains?
Yes, so it's, it's their Baby Gold beer, like, their beer, but they, I think you said in the forest park, yeah, yeah, the brewery and... Isn't that a summer club, right? It's like... Yeah, yeah, it's like... No, no, the Big Gold. No, no, the Big Gold. Oh, yeah, but when the roots are done. It's like, I, I can't imagine it's easy to say. I'm sure, you do try it, right? The big old. Yeah, yeah.
I love the barbecue.
And they have a lot of cool parties now, too.
I didn't even know. Oh.
Is this the, this is the community dollar? What's up, community dollar?
What's in you? Yes, actually, this one, actually, yes. It's kind of up there in age, it's a boy. Is it a boy or a big girl? Oh, probably, then, um, it's, yeah, Oscar shot. It's very small. But it's there. It's really small, it's big at all. I was looking, like, you know, Peter's girl, he wants. Okay. Well, why do you talk to her anymore? I didn't see it at all. Or maybe. All right, I have your thanks, maybe you need to do a video, clearly. Yeah, hi, council.
That's real. Wait, wait.
Brandon Fox, sends it out earlier, so changes the interest rate.
Okay.
Any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you. How long are you? I know, I already fucked up. He's so cute. Yeah, he's adorable. How are you? I'm just seeing things, I hope. Let me touch this. No.
He's, 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 he's still learning. What'd you say? Yeah. Yeah.
As a child, you have to make a family, school, education, would be sixteen, ninety-one.
That's true, that's true.
I, 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 I.
No, it's good, yeah. If people could please. I do too, I mean. Was Stanley just?
Yes.
He says, Dan, you haven't spent a lot of time on a big, a lot of. Three years old, you gotta laugh.
Gotcha, okay, whatever you say there.
Hello?
Okay, seven fifty-six, we'll start soon.
All right, thank you.
Uh, he's, was, was standing near your office. I'm ready.
Two minutes, mayor. Very close.
Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Lennon.
Here.
Boywood.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Bate.
Here.
Pabon.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Aronella.
Here.
Carmichael.
Here.
Ace, present, mayor.
Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could please keep in our thoughts and prayers all the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forward to the swing gate, state your name and address, please. Is that my gun?
Yo, there it is. Sorry, I do that every time.
No, that's okay.
Getting used to things. Um, hi, so my name is Suzie Donnelly, I live on the thirty-one hundred block of Wisconsin. I've met with you last, um, meeting. I'm sorry, I do owe you some information that I've just.
It's fine.
Life happens. Um, but I'm here today to address something that has happened recently, um, that I was made aware of today, or maybe to yesterday. Um, which is a high school student was hit by a driver on their way walking to or from school, um, this week. And, um, in that incident, the driver did not have insurance. He was a seventy-three-year-old man who lived around the block and was, uh, ticketed and allowed to drive home. He didn't have insurance, which is illegal, and he drove home. And I, I mentioned to you the need for safe streets. I mentioned to you the need for smart design within our community. And I mentioned to you the need for good, real public transit that is not performative and only designed for commuters. Um, one of the things that I talked about also is the fact that, you know, it most negatively impacts women and, uh, minorities. When we have cities that are not designed for people, they are designed for cars. And this is such a perfect example to speak of. That girl went to the hospital for medical care and the seventy-three-year-old man was allowed to drive his vehicle around the corner and go home. I am not trying to make this gentleman out to be a bad guy because I don't believe that there was malintent behind what he did. But what I am going to say is that witnesses have told me that he was going kind of slow and then he sped up and hit her. Which tells me very likely that he mixed up the pedals. As we get older, our reaction time is worse. And in a lot of communities, especially more rural communities, drivers license, uh, DMVs employees, excuse me, are hesitant to take away somebody's driver's license because that is their only access to medical care and to their community, to their churches, to their grocery store. When we take away their driver's license, they can't get anywhere. And in Berwyn, that is our situation because we have buses that only come every thirty minutes to every hour. We have trains that cannot get us down.
Not to interrupt you, but we have a senior services that for a dollar each way will take people to the medical, to take groceries, to all that stuff also. So that's another option that we do.
Right, I, I understand, but that's to a degree the equivalent of having to call an Uber or having to call extra services and having to wait and not having the onus, the autonomy of being able to go when you're ready to go and do what you want to do when you want to do it, right? And so, um, smart infrastructure, smart design is designed to allow people the ability to go when they want to and come back when they want to. And I, I, I love that we have that service. Maybe we need to make some concerted efforts to make sure all of our, um, elderly citizens know we have that. But that still doesn't address the individuals like my child's friend's parents who don't have a car right now because it's out of service and they can't afford to get it replaced or repaired. And so what are they, what are their options, right? That doesn't serve them, right? Smart design gets your, smart design brings to your community, um, behavior change. So that you don't have the issue that we are seeing from this pandemic of people driving recklessly and hurting people. And I will note, there was another student that was hurt, that was hit by a car also within the last month. Um, when I spoke to the, to the woman who shared that information with me, the best she could say was it happened before the time change. Um, she couldn't give me more specific than that. But these issues impact our kids. And again, it causes parents to say, I can't let my child walk to school. And who is going to cover that? Because I can guarantee you, it's usually going to be mom. And I can guarantee you, it's her financials, it's her independence that starts getting taken away. Which is unacceptable for a sixteen-year-old kid to have to have mom and dad drop them off at school when we are such a small community. So I just wanted to bring that up and make you aware of it. But also, I really think we need to consider our policy or procedure. Because having our police officers let somebody who is illegally driving get back in his car and drive home when he's just hit somebody, to me is inexcusable and it's unacceptable.
Well, I'll look into that, I'm very interested when you give me that other, if the videos that you have. So that we can talk about some of the other ideas that you have.
Yeah, absolutely. So I greatly appreciate that, I just really believe that it was necessary to make this one known because it's such a interesting combination of all the things that I talked to you about, right? So, um, thank you very much again for your time, I appreciate it. I will get the more information to you.
Yes, fine.
And, um, if you have any questions or again, anything else I can help with, I'd be happy to.
I have your number.
Thank you.
Officer Fellows?
Uh, members of council, uh, I know it's your form, my name is Commander Mike Fellows. This is, uh, my colleague Commander David Zarabak. We just wanted to come to council this evening. Um, I know what's going on on social media, but we did want to introduce, um, our newest member to the Berwyn Police Department, to city council along with, uh, the community. This is, uh, we call him Pofficer, but his name is Romeo. Uh, Romeo is a, is a two-year-old, a mix. We are trying to determine exactly, um, what his breed is. He is a rescue, um, he's got almost two thousand hours of training. Um, we did, uh, get him from a company called Sit Training Services. Um, he's trained in, uh, deep pressure therapy. Um, what that is, is, um, like if you're sitting or with children or whatever, uh, Romeo will come up to you and actually kind of bury his head into your body. It's a, a calming, soothing type of, uh, type of therapy. The intention with Romeo is to obviously bring him to, um, all of our schools, um, all of our community events. Obviously, if we have children that are in need, um, or in crisis that come to our department, um, uh, along with the officers that work there. He is a, a facilities dog. Um, so he actually lives at the Berwyn Police Department, uh, twenty-four, seven. Um, there are six or seven, what they call, uh, master handlers, which make sure that all of his daily needs are, are taken care of. And then there's probably close to what, thirty? Thirty other officers that we could, would consider secondary handlers that, um, are able again to take care of his daily needs, um, if, uh, a primary handler's not around. Um, did you want to say a couple of words? Um, so, uh, a- as, as I said, he, the Romeo did, is, um, technically kind of assigned to Commander Zarabak's unit. So with the alderman, obviously, I, I believe you'd have to go through the, the chief or deputy. But if there are any events or anything like that, that you'd like to see the, uh, officer come out to, uh, please don't hesitate. I'll be here for a little while, so if anyone here wants to meet with him after council.
Thank you. Anybody else to open forum?
Hello, Mayor, hello council members. My name is Deborah Bain and I live at twenty-two thirty-one Clarence. Um, I'm actually here tonight to speak for a friend, um, who could not come, but I felt somewhat responsible for the experience she had in Berwyn and, um, wanted to make sure that her story was told. She herself is not a citizen of Berwyn. Well, she was one for about ten days. And, um, I'm sharing this experience because we don't want what happened to her to happen to anyone else. Um, I'm sorry, I have, I, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, um, but she unexpectedly could not come, so I offered to speak for her, so I have some notes on my phone. Um, I welcomed my friend to Berwyn with open arms. I shared with her the wonderful, um, Y Berwyn campaign, basically. Spokes Berwyn, spokesperson for Y Berwyn. Um, she's a musician, she's an artist. She loved the community feel and the, um, city of homes. Um, she wanted to move here from Seattle, Washington, where she had her own music school and, um, her own life as a musician, which was interrupted by COVID. She needed to make a new start for herself, so she drove across the country, searching out communities on her way. She passed through Berwyn to visit me, really enjoyed the time that she spent here, continued on to the east coast and within a few days was on her way back because she liked it here so much. She spent about two months in our town, searching for a place to live. She wasn't focusing just on Berwyn, she was looking all over Chicagoland. But she eventually ended up with an apartment just a few blocks away from me, um, in the fifth ward. So happy that she found a place so close by. This, um, property is at twenty-three forty-five Kyler Avenue, apartment number one. The owner and landlord is a Larisi Montez. The, um, property was rented, um, and there was a few days where the services need to be turned on, the utilities. And in that time, um, after those few days, she then moved into the apartment. And within one night of staying there, she found herself coughing and, uh, wheezing. And, uh, she also has a dog and the dog was also coughing and wheezing. And so, um, she started doing some cleaning of the apartment and she found mold, black mold. She took pictures of the mold. Um, she, uh, called a friend to, you know, help her do some more deep cleaning. Um, and after two nights of staying there, she just couldn't stay there anymore. So, uh, she did address this with the landlord and, uh, within a few days, it wasn't necessarily twenty-four hours, there were some things to, uh, that they had to, um, arrange for people to come rip out. Uh, the mold was in the, underneath the kitchen sink, in the cupboards, uh, you could see the mold. They ripped out that whole structure while, and there was no controlled way of doing this. The, all of that, all of the cabinet structure went straight to the alley. So all of the mold was, you know, being dispersed into the air. Um, she had to stay somewhere else. Um, I was out of town on family, um, a family emergency and so she couldn't stay with me. She ended up staying in her car one night, staying in her storage unit. Um, and when she asked for my advice, I said, reach out to these people. Reach out to your alderman. Reach out to David Avila. I'm gonna see if I can get more help. I reached out to a friend of mine who talked with Marge Paul. She directly contacted Rob Habon. I'm really disappointed. I'm really disappointed in the response that she got from people that I know personally. Um, she was basically told, take, take, uh, take the losses. Sign, sign the paperwork so that you don't, uh, lose all of your money because the landlord wasn't going to give back her deposit. I mean, her, her, she paid a first month's rent, a deposit. Um, so if she'd signed this paperwork, she would have gotten back in five hundred dollars out of, I think, two thousand. She couldn't afford that. And her heart is more concerned about the impact of this mold situation for people who might, future tenants of this place. She held on to the keys for two weeks so that someone from the city could come in and investigate. She ch- contacted Chuck Lazara. Nobody came in. Well, David Avila came to, uh, see the place and take pictures, told that she would be fined. That turns out, the city can't find the landlord, um, for the mold. Uh, my friend submitted a blight ticket online, no response. Called the Buildings Department, got hung up on. People are pointing fingers, it's your responsibility. No, it's their responsibility. Whose responsibility is it? So she got some mold tests done. There's four different types of mold in this unit. It's toxic. The reason she couldn't be here tonight is she drove by this place and there's someone living there now. And she was so upset that she couldn't bring herself to come and speak to the leaders of this community because of the response she's gotten from our leaders already, which is basically not a lot of help. So I told her, I said, I live here. I'm a citizen of this community. I don't, I don't feel that this was handled in the right way. I, I need this to be known. So I will go and make your statement today. I will submit the documentation of all of the communications with people, um, on the council and in, in city government, uh, as well as the pictures of the black mold. While she was, um, getting rid of the mold, in the couple of days that she was there, um, and there were workers removing, um, fixtures from the apartment, there was a family, a mother, a pregnant mother, seven months pregnant with a four-year-old child, looking at the unit right next to this place with sharing walls. Her concern, she, she's given up the money that she's lost. She did not sign the document to get her five hundred dollars back because she would have also had to sign that she wouldn't take any legal action. And she probably will, even if it's to small claims court. Her bigger concern though, is for the people who are now living in that building. And what is going into their lungs? Test molds from the HVAC unit, not just the visible stuff on the walls. So from this experience, what I understand is that there's not a process to deal with this in Berwyn. That nothing can be done. And I just don't want that, I don't want to believe that. I don't want that to be the answer. I don't want the people who are currently living there to be inhaling that mold and for whatever long-term effects it might have on them, especially if it's a pregnant mother and her four-year-old child.
Would you leave that documentation with me, please?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, uh, my name is Jonathan Palace, uh, twenty-third and Euclid, uh, third ward resident. Uh, in high school, I was introduced to a really important book, uh, in my life called Nineteen Eighty-Four by George Orwell. Uh, in the book Orwell described a society in which the government, led by Big Brother, had complete control over all the people in the society. And they had cameras everywhere and the public never had privacy. I remember thinking, how would people allow the government to install cameras everywhere? Uh, in addition to the surveillance state, the folks in nineteen eighty-four were, were run by a government that was dishonest and controlled the masses through a constant stream of lies. Any dissent was met with personal attacks to discredit the voices of the traitors and, and then ex- extreme punishment. And so here we are. Our police chief attacks elected officials for disagreeing with them. The police department openly displays that they screenshot and print Facebook posts made by private citizens. Our public works director blames the citizens for lack of services and our mayor dismisses any dissenting voices. The actions of our leadership do not build trust with the community. And yet here they are for us, asking us to trust them, to let them monitor our, our movement in and out of the city. Now, I'm a tech person too. I, I say that because I've heard elected officials who make decisions on tech purchases which impact the citizens of Berwyn describe themselves as not tech people. I have a love for technology and the way it can be used to improve our lives. However, I also try to stay focused on the ethical implications of technologies. And while we're being sold a system that will help us fight the bad guys, it also requires a degree, a degree of surrender of our personal privacy. When evaluating the efficacy of a technology system, you have to identify first what the problem is that you're trying to solve. So I would ask, are we trying to get these cameras because they're going to lead to decre- decreases in crime? Or will it lead to increases in conviction? in crime, or will it lead to increases in convictions? Is it a proactive or is it a reactive system? Another factor to consider whether or not a tech system is effective is by setting measures of success. If these cameras are purchased, how will the city be measuring their success? Again, will it be a decrease in crime, an increase of convictions? Will it help to deter specific types of crime? So once you've identified the problem and determined a valid measurement by which to determine success or failure of the tool, then you begin investigating the success of the tool in the other, in other communities. At the September 4th meeting, and again today, detective, or I'm sorry, Commander Fellows, rather, indicated that each of the following towns, Cicero, Morton High School, Stickney, Countryside, Chicago, La Grange Park, Park Forest, McCook, have already deployed this technology. What data can they provide to indicate that the cameras were successful in addressing the needs of those communities? When dealing with a system that has such ethical implications and requires a surrender of personal privacy, it's imperative that policies be in place prior to purchase. Again, at the, at the meeting last week and this week, Commander Fellows indicated that the policies and procedures are a work in progress and that policies will be finalized and take effect upon implementation of this project. This makes me concerned because you're asking the council to purchase a highly controversial, controversial surveillance tool, and asking them to trust that your policies are going to be robust enough to guarantee no misuse of the system. Commander Fellows mentioned in the last council of the whole meeting on the 14th of September that use is restricted to law enforcement and public safety functions of the Berwyn Police Department. Now, this sounds like a great policy, but it hinges on trust that the policy will be followed and enforced. Tonight, we watched the sales rep pull up Cicero's cameras to demonstrate the system. The vendor himself demonstrated that they, the vendor, have access to public information, and they'll display it at public, in public meetings. Last June, Berwyn Police photographed protesters from the roof of City Hall at a Black Lives Matter rally. This photography indicated there was a threat to public safety. With this in mind, would it then be reasonable to track the license numbers of all the attendees of that rally? When we have a police department that has displayed a lack of communication and has done very little earned to earn the public trust, asking us to trust that everyone is going to follow the rules is very difficult for me to swallow. It seems that if you are really interested in public safety, the policies at least would be in place prior to implementation. I would ask that the council postpone this vote until the police department can provide a completed policy document to meet your approval prior to authorizing any purchase. In this year, Berwyn Police purchased a device that can access all personal information available on a mobile phone, and now they're asking to monitor the movement of every individual entering and exiting this city. They continue to move us deeper into a surveillance state. This should be concerning to every citizen of Berwyn, because in Berwyn, Big Brother is watching.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum?
Luz Chavez, 1600 Ridgeland, I want to thank Japes for a very comprehensive statement on the concerns regarding the APLRs. Not sure what the rush, rush, rush always is, and why people that are on your party, the aldermen, always vote yes to whatever you put on the agenda. So I'm not sure why it can't just be paused until a policy is put in place.
I am here, though, to discuss another policing issue. So Mayor Lovero and Berwyn City Council, in April of 2019, I'm gonna give a long read list because it shows a pattern. In April of 2019, during a meeting with Berwyn Community Action, Chief Semaglia agreed to have ongoing meetings with BCA on concerns about racial profiling by the Berwyn Police Department. Those concerns included several testimonials of firsthand experiences of residents and BCA members being profiled by Berwyn Police. Chief Semaglia did meet with us and you that one time, and then both of you refused to meet with us again despite BCA's repeated attempts to schedule a follow-up meeting. During the June 1st civil unrest of 2020, Chief Semaglia allowed non-black residents to break curfew and roam the streets of Berwyn armed with weapons, and at least one resident had opened liquor, as shown on the livestream of the, of the event, and they were looking for black folks. This made black residents feel so unsafe to the point that a private group was created and community banded together to escort black residents to and from their homes for several days. On August 11th, 2020, during a peaceful, black-led rally in Berwyn, Chief Semaglia decided to line the rooftop of City Hall with cops with long rifles and one cop with a camera who took photos of the participants, many of whom are families. In that same month, the Diversity Commission's only black member and the commission chair resigned because Chief Semaglia refused to act in good faith with the Diversity Commission and their recommendations and their report on racial profiling allegations. In January of this year, Chief Semaglia decided to sign on to the NAACP's 10 Shared Principles of Policing. He never explained why it took him three years to sign on to these principles. I would encourage Semaglia to read those principles because he has continually violated them and showed no respect for them. I want to just list a few, I have it printed out, this is the Berwyn Police Department All persons should be treated with dignity and respect. We reject discrimination toward any person that is based on race. We endorse the values of community policing, which includes community partnerships. We believe that developing strong, ongoing relationships between law enforcement and communities of color at the leadership level and street level will be the keys to diminishing and eliminating racial tension. There's more, but I'll just leave those. So on November 17th, just six days ago, Chief Semaglia again violated those principles, particularly the ones I just read. He chose to demonstrate the utmost disrespect, dismissiveness, and unprofessionalism with a person of color, with a leader of color, and with, who happens to also be Berwyn's first black alderman, Alderman Joe Carmichael. Instead of releasing a politically neutral clarification, Semaglia used disrespectful language to attack Carmichael and wrote a politically charged vindictive letter that brought up a three-month-old ordinance Semaglia disagreed with that has absolutely nothing to do with the topic at hand. Even many of the police department supporters saw and expressed how unprofessional and politically motivated his letter was. That was November 17th, today's November 23rd, and you, Mayor Lovero, have still allowed that to stand, that post, that statement is still up, you've done nothing about it, which means you agree with it. That is completely unacceptable. These incidences that I've shared are not coincidences. Chief Semaglia has zero understanding and respect for black folks. He has proven that over and over again. Semaglia has no business having any position in our city.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Karina Lopez, I live on the 1800 block of Kyler, and I just wanted to add my, add onto the comments made today. I'm not in agreement with these cameras that were, that are being proposed, and just wanted to add a little bit to what was said earlier regarding the policies that should be in place before implementation, because that, those are what should be guiding implementation. I would urge that this council and the Berwyn Police Department also articulate policies to ensure strict privacy for the large amount of data of residents and those driving through, through the city that's being tracked, and to flesh out what it means to abuse the system. When last council meeting in Committee of the Whole was expressed that there would be some measure of that, but that wasn't explained, so I would encourage the, the explanation of that, defining what abusing that system means, how that will be tracked, and what kind of consequences will follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address open forum? Council members? Anything for open forum?
Yeah, something real quick for you, Mayor. With regards to like that mold complaint, what would be the proper channels to go through?
I wanna read the information. Generally, that would be a health district, but I would need to confer with Marge as far as what they have in those types of state legislation regarding it, but there's still stuff that the city can do with respect to investigating this apartment building and finding the owner. So that's what I wanna look at.
And so, in that scenario of like we were to get that complaint, would that be to contact you and the Health Department? Is that like the, is that what we're supposed to do?
You've sent me numerous emails about things, and I kinda direct you in the right direction. So if there's anything, yes, you can always send it to me, and I will direct you to the correct department or various departments that might pertain.
Okay, sounds good.
Anybody else?
So Mayor, just to clarify, in this circumstance with the mold, so I know we don't have a housing department specifically which deals with landlord and tenant ordinances and issues, so does a person have, I mean, is this a blight jurisdiction or not?
I'm not sure.
And I know it's, we have vague information, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a blight jurisdiction, but it's still something that we can look at with respect to how the apartment is being kept or what caused that, because obviously for mold to occur, something else had occurred prior to that. Between us, between the city, the Building Department, the Health Department, we should be able to come up with some resolution, especially if it's just being ripped out and thrown in the alley. That's number one. And the fact that when we, when we inspect these types of things, you might not see that mold. I believe the Health District does, if Marge could correct me if I'm wrong, has a detector to tell what the mold is like, but I'm not positive on that. So we'll have to look into, but with this situation, what concerns me the most is that we can't find the landlord, and we're not making the landlord accountable. That's what I wanna look into.
And that's exactly my main concern, too. And the reason I'm asking for clarifications is because I-
I think we would have more authority here at the city to make the landlord accountable than the Health District, but that's why I wanna work with Marge on that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, just to follow up on that real quick, do we have any sort of policy to like inspect apartments on a regular basis, or is that just like left to?
The only thing that's inspected on a regular basis when it comes to multiple apartments, like more flats and more, is the fire safety. So that's what is done on a routine basis, but again, that's a smaller department, and they just really, Battalion Chief Manfredini and his, whoever is taking those inspections for that week or that day, do it more for fire safety. This would be something different, this might even be something where we have to call a state agency to take a look at this apartment, too.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, like, in these scenarios, is it on like the onus of the resident to report this, or do we have anything where we're like, you know, the, like, does an apartment building have to be up to a certain code that we're inspecting for?
Unless it's being sold, something like this would not be discovered by outside of inspection.
Okay, thanks.
And just, yes, Mayor, if I could just add, just to the question that Alderman Michaels asking about was, mostly like regarding mold, radon, lead base, a lot of these laws are state laws that, they could be referred, so if that, if that landlord can be held accountable, it will be through, like, through a reference to a state attorney?
More than likely.
And then they do have laws on the books that protect homeowners, and if there is a violation, of course, in this case with the, with the existing mold, they can be held accountable. And in the lease agreement, that's kinda when they go over those terms, that if there is, there's, you know, you're allowed to inspect the property and so on and so forth, but if something does come up, there is, there is, you know, and if the, if the, if the owner knowingly left mold in the house, that is when they can be prosecuted, and there could be serious, you know.
And on a civil matter, the, the presence of mold, even if you didn't know about it beforehand, could be a, a potential for the tenant to legally break the lease and get all the earnest money back on a civil. But let me look into all the different avenues that I can address on this, okay? Nothing else from Alderman on open forum? Okay, item C1, please.
Item C1, are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole and the regular city council meeting of November 9th, 2021?
I will make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole and regular city council meeting minutes of November 9th.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting and the general city council meeting of November 9th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
He said he abstained, he wasn't here.
Okay. Item F1, please.
We have item D1, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll go with the other one.
Item D1 is a communication from Chief Semaglia, authorization to purchase ALPR cameras from Flock Safety.
I'm gonna make a motion to defer this until we can get the full policy from the Berwyn Police Department and how this will be regulated.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, seconded by Habon, to defer this until such time as the policy is brought before the council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a call of the roll, please?
Lennon?
Nay.
Boywood?
Nay.
Leja?
Nay.
Faith?
Nay.
Habon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aranella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Four to four, Mayor.
I'm gonna say nay, but I will insist that the policy be submitted to this council prior to the cameras going into effect, before they're turned on. Do I have a motion then on D1?
I will make that motion, but first I'd like to explain a little of it. In 1976, license plate recognition technology was invented. By 1979, a few working systems were in effect, and by 1981, the system had identified and recovered its first stolen car. Throughout the 80s and 90s, the systems were improved and perfected. In 1993, London stepped up their use to combat terrorism, and its effectiveness increased its popularity. Today, it is one of the many tools used by law enforcement. It is quite prevalent in our own area. Cicero, Riverside, La Grange, McCook, Justice, Forest Park, North Riverside, Willow Springs, Burbank, La Grange, Bellwood, and Oak Forest all successfully used this technology. Chicago recently agreed to install a system, and Stickney is working on getting a system, as are others. We all know crime is on the rise, and as one of the few cities in the area without this technology, we are basically a black hole for those planning nefarious deeds. It is invaluable in amber alerts, stolen cars which are regularly used in carjackings, silver alerts, which are missing or lost seniors, and for those without outstanding warrants. We know that it does work. The system we are looking at is to Flock Safety, which some cities in our area also use, making it easier to share and work together. The criminals are stepping up their game, and we need to as well. We are obliged to do what we can for the safety and security of our residents. I have studied this since I first learned Berwyn was hoping to acquire this technology. All the rules, regulations, and laws governing this technology to ensure privacy and fairness have been in place and adhered to for decades. Of all the issues I have spoken to the residents of the third ward about, this is by far and away the most popular issue I have dealt with. What I nearly unanimously hear from my residents is not why, but when. Therefore, I move that we approve the police department's request seeking authorization to purchase 24 ALPR cameras from Flock Safety for a total cost of $67,300 for the first year, and then $63,700 for any recurring years, and approve an agreement with the Berwyn Development Corporation to defray about half the cost in the amount of $33,050 for the first year, and then $31,250 for the recurring years, leaving Berwyn responsible for $34,250 the first year, and $32,450 thereafter yearly. The first year's $34,250 have been added to the Berwyn Police Department's 2022 budget, and have the agreement executed by the corporate authorities, fix the signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Lennon, to concur with the communication of Commander, well, it's communication from Chief Semaglia as presented by Commander Fellows, to expend the funds of sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred for the first year, sixty-three-seven for any recurring year, for twenty-four cameras, half the cost being burned, paid by the Berwyn Development Corporation in the amount of thirty-three-thousand-fifty for the first year, Berwyn thirty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty, which is included in the City of Berwyn budget. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Nay.
Ruiz?
Mayor, for the record, I'd like to clarify that I am in favor of this system. I believe that it's beneficial to our community. After receiving the daily reports from all shifts from our police department on the things that are going on, that many of our community members are not aware to the degree that we are, or the police department, who are actually in the trenches dealing with this on a regular basis. Also on top of that, I did have a community meeting with my residents, with forty or fifty-plus residents were there, that Commander Fellows was present and went in detail about this system, its use. Lots of questions were asked, and again, kind of what my proudly Leja has said, the concern was not about privacy, the concern was about this and more. What else besides this and more can you do to bring safety to my community, to where I reside, to where my children play, to where my children walk to school, where I'm coming out of my garage into my home? So I'm not opposing the system itself, but I would love to know that we are getting the best bang for our buck. I want to thank Flock for coming and doing a demonstration that really helped me understand the system and how it works, but I would love to see some measurables to ensure that we are getting the best bang for our buck and that we're utilizing our tax dollars to the best of their ability. So some sort of accountability, some measurables, and also the idea of maybe if it's not working in one corridor, that the cameras are being moved to other areas as crime fluctuates. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I yea for my answer, my vote.
And we will want to see the policy, though, before anything goes into action.
Yes, absolutely.
I feel the same way. I'm not opposed to them. I just wanted to see more documentation on them. I think that the Flock presentation was great, and I would say yea.
No.
Hey, wait for me to call your name.
Sorry.
Hey, I have a job. Six to two, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F one, please.
Item F one is a proclamation. This is a proclamation, whereas in nineteen ninety, Congress passed and President George H.W. Bush signed into law a joint resolution designating the month of November as the first National American Indian Heritage Month. American Indians were the original inhabitants of what now is the United States, and the City of Berwyn is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have unrestricted opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, and safe lives. And it's important to honor the Native American veterans and service members who have served in the United States Armed Forces dating back to World War I and World War II. Native Americans have defended our country during every major conflict and continue to serve at a higher rate than any other ethnic group in the United States. And whereas this month and every month, we honor the strong and lasting cultures and contributions Native Americans have made. In addition, we acknowledge November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Native American Heritage Day. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that I admire Robert Lovero and the esteemed members of the City Council proclaim November, two thousand and twenty-one, as Native, National Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate rich culture of indigenous people to raise awareness about their history and acknowledge the countless important contributions Native Americans have made to our nation.
Be my motion to adopt the proclamation and authorize the corporate authorities to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Lennon, to adopt the proclamation, authorize the corporate authorities to fix necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I one, please.
Item I one is a deferred item from November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, regarding handicap parking application thirteen eighty.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the approval of this handicap space at twenty-one twenty-one South Elmwood, but I also like to share just a little bit of the reason why I had deferred it the first, at our last council meeting to now. There was just, there was a discrepancy in fines that were owed to the city on the property, and I was unclear as to whether it belonged to the actual handicap applicant, if they were the building owner, or if it belonged to the building. This building itself has several thousand dollars in back pay fines from water and blights. And it's an absentee landlord who rents out the unit, who doesn't invest, and I say this very aware, because I live around the block from this building, I wa, I walk past it every day when I walk my dog. So we have an absentee landlord who doesn't invest in the community, doesn't invest in the building, does nothing for his tenants, and has racked up thousands of dollars in fines. So that's where the confusion came in. The individual themselves does not owe money to the city, but here's another example of how absentee landlords abuse our city, and we carry the burden of them. We just heard an example of mold and, you know, a landlord renting and re-renting, and we have another case of a landlord who has fines racking up for, for blights and for water bills, and we continue to carry that burden. And this is just something that I think as council members, we should seriously be looking into this and thinking about how we can correct this issue. It's a serious issue, and we now have a rat population that continues to grow every year, with some of this being part of the problem, absentee landlords. So I just wanted to share that. I'm venting, I know I'm on a soapbox right now about this situation, but I just wanted to share that with my colleagues, that it's, it's definitely a serious conversation that we should all be having. So I motion the approval of this handicap sign.
And your points are well taken.
Second.
I'm sorry?
Your points are well taken.
Thank you, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aranella, to approve the handicap application at twenty-one twenty-one South Elmwood Avenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I two.
I two is a communication from Alderman Lennon regarding budget and finance committee meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept this communication as informational.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to consider the communication as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I three.
I three is a communication from Alderman and Pabon regarding ad hoc red abatement committee minutes.
Can I make a motion to accept this as informational?
Second.
Motion by Pabon, seconded by Aranella, to consider the communication as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I four, please.
I four is a communication from the Police and Fire Commission regarding probationary police officer Diego Diaz.
I move that we accept as informational the message from the Police and Fire Commissioners in reference to probationary police officer Diego Diaz.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Lennon, to consider the communication regarding probationary police officer Diego Diaz as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J one.
J one is a communication from City Administrator Siapa Green regarding renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance.
I'll make a motion to authorize City Administration to execute a contract with Safety National for excess workers' compensation insurance at a premium of one hundred and seventy-six thousand five eighty-one with an SAR of one million dollars.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to concur with the recommendation of City Administrator Siapa Green, authorize the administration to execute the contract with Safety National for excess workers' compensation insurance, with the premium being one thousand seven hundred and seventy, one hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars with an SAR of one million dollars. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aranella? Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J two, please.
J two is a communication from IT Director James Frank requesting to proceed with RFP for dark fiber metro ethernet network.
I will make a motion to allow Jim Frank to go out to, for RFP for the dark fiber metro ethernet network.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Aranella, to concur with the recommendation, IT Director Frank, to allow him to go for RFP for the dark fiber metro ethernet network. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J three, please.
J three is a communication from Director Frank regarding request to proceed with RFP for Cisco Catalyst nine four zero zero slash nine three zero zero equipment.
I will make a motion to authorize Director Frank to go out for RFP for the Cisco Catalyst ninety-four hundred, ninety-three hundred equipment.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Aranella, to concur with Director of IT, Jim Frank, to allow him to go out and publish and post the RFP for the purchase of the Cisco Catalyst ninety-four hundred slash ninety-three hundred equipment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J four, please.
J four is a communication from Building Director Lozara requesting permission to demolish buildings at an address commonly known as one-two-two-zero South Gunderson.
Alderman? This is your word, isn't it?
Uh, yes, I make a motion to approve Director Lozara's request to demolish all structures at twelve-twenty Gunderson Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, seconded by Faith, to concur with the recommendation, Director Lozara, to allow the demolition of twelve-twenty South Gunderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This communication also says, uh, twelve.
Well, the vacant lot is twelve-twenty, is this next door, so the house and the garage are, I believe, only in one lot.
Okay.
So twelve-twenty is the mailing address.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion carried. Item J five, please.
J five is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller regarding approval of the attached pay request number three to Pan Oceanic Engineering for Depot District Utilities.
I'd like to motion that we approve the recommendation of Director Schiller's pay request number three for five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents from the City of Berwyn, I, I, I E P A Water Main and Sewer Loans.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aranella, to concur with the recommendation, Director Schiller, and approve the pay request number three, the amount of five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents from the City of Berwyn, the I E P A Water Main and Sewer Loans. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aranella? Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J six, please.
J six is a communication from Director Schiller regarding approval of the attached change orders one, two, and three for the Depot District Utility Construction.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Schiller's recommendation of change order numbers one, two, and three totaling three hundred and one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents from the City of Berwyn, I, I E P A Water Line and Sewer Loans.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Aranella, to concur with Director Schiller and approve the change orders number one, two, and three totaling three hundred and one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents from the City of Berwyn, I E P A Water Main and Sewer Loans. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aranella?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J seven, please.
J seven is a communication from Finance Director Deish in an ordinance reading, an ordinance authorizing and approving the Third Amendment of a certain revolving credit agreement between the City of Berwyn and BMO Harris Bank N.A. for the City of Berwyn, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised ordinance that would finalize the terms of extending the line of credit further, including the current three million dollar draw. Fix the necessary signatures, send it on its way to passage.
Second.
A motion by Lennon, seconded by Faith, to concur with the recommendation of Finance Director Deish, and approve the revised ordinance that finalize the terms of extending the line of credit further and including the current three million dollar draw. All those, fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Boywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Aranella?
Aye.